We have the roll call, please. Commissioner Newlin, Commissioner Nussehda, Commissioner Robb, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Gates, Commissioner Peterson, Commissioner Shaw,
Here.
Commissioner Mom, Commissioner Edgar,
Here.
And Chair Walters.
Here.
Let's see, we're fortunate to have urban renewal training and um I'm sorry, oh, thank you, okay, thank you. Thank you for your help there, I appreciate it.
And as part of your packet that was sent out last week, you had a a handout that was put together by Jeff Tashman, another urban renewal attorney. We can update from Jeanette, you should have that with you. We also have a few hard copies in the back room if anyone in the audience is interested. And then also attached to that was a one-page summary of measuring success in terms of urban renewal in Oregon. And this isn't the necessarily the the complete list, but I think we included or Jeanette included it to get your thought process going about what makes a good urban renewal project. So we have Intelsys 45 for this. And then we'll be going into executive session. So with that, Jeanette.
Dan, so is this all working, everything's good? It doesn't echo, I'm shocked. As Dan said, I'm Jeanette Loner and I've been working in the urban renewal area for a little over 25 years. And over that time, as you might imagine, urban renewal as a tool has evolved significantly. There was a time when urban renewal was revolved around the notion of mow it down and build it new. And those are the very early urban renewal plans that you see some in various communities around the state. Portland, Eugene, Salem did some of those kinds of urban renewal projects. However, as we have moved forward and evolved as a community and as a tool, urban renewal has become increasingly a locally controlled financial tool to expand your tax base and to increase and in increase private investment in the cities and thereby increase your job base. And those are usually the kinds of goals that urban renewal plans have when they are adopted in our, in our current timeframe. So I was told that it would not be insulting to sort of start at the beginning and have a little bit of primer on urban renewal, the urban renewal law, how urban renewal works in a very general way. And then talk a little bit about some case studies and some successes and not so successful urban renewal plans and projects. So is that an acceptable approach? Okay. So what is urban renewal? Well, urban renewal, as I said, is a locally controlled program which is set up is used in order to improve particular areas in what the state law calls a municipality. And that can be either a city or a county, but you'll find me slipping often into saying the city, the city council. Because the vast majority of the urban renewal agencies are sponsored by cities. There are, I believe, five counties who also have urban renewal areas. The urban renewal agency is the implementing body of an urban renewal plan. The urban renewal agency is a a governmental body that is separate from its municipal sponsor, for lack of a better term. So in your case, your renewal commission is a separate public body from the city of Oregon City. And in that role, you are required to act as a separate body. You have to have your own budget hearings, you have to have your own audit. You have your own bylaws, all those kinds of things. As I understand it, some of you are also city councillors. And so you're in a position where actually, in a lot of ways, there's, there are tough decisions to be made when you need one or the other. So that is actually one of the unique things about urban renewal is that you have often have elected officials and appointed officials doing something that isn't necessarily part of their normal course of what they do as, as city councillors. The idea of urban renewal is pretty simple. You find an area in your city, or it's usually brought to your attention, that it has certain characteristics that are defined in Oregon law as blight. And there is traditional blight in the sense of, in the olden days, in the 50s and 60s, there were federal programs for slum and blight clearance. And we are talking there about very dilapidated buildings, health problems, no running water, collapsing foundations, streets that are crumbling away, a pretty classic slum sort of a, of a situation, if you put that in your head. However, when the urban renewal law was adopted in the late 50s in Oregon, the, the folks who drafted the law and as it was subsequently adopted, saw the definition of blight as a broader problem. And the idea was there are other kinds of conditions in a particular area that can cause a disincentive for investment. A disincentive to have your, those particular areas live up to their potential. So we have in Oregon law, a long list of conditions takes up, if you look at the Oregon Vice Statutes, one whole column and another half a column. That's the definition of blight. And it includes a number of things that certainly have been controversial when implemented. For example, a disconnect between the use of land currently and its comprehensive planning use. That's a, that is a, those aren't the exact words of the statute, but that's an example of something that could be an indication of blight under the Oregon law. It also has pretty common things like inefficient or non-existent utilities and streets. But again, in relation to sort of the best use of the properties as that has been determined by the government. So just a little bit of background. Urban renewal, as you know, is used all over the state of Oregon. Too bad it says urban at the beginning, because there are in fact 72 urban renewal agencies around the state. And they range from Milton Freewater to Klamath Falls, up and down the coast, up and down the valley. And each one of those, remember, is a locally controlled agency with its own goals for its city. And it's using, however, the same state authorized tool to make improvements in its cities. Hence, one of the things that urban renewal advocates often remind those who are not such big advocates. A little bit of an aside, I told Dan that I got to start my morning at 8:00 AM in a legislative committee talking about urban renewal. And the first thing you kind of have to remind people is, this isn't just Portland that is involved in urban renewal. And so the purpose of urban renewal, or I should say, urban renewal projects go all across the board. It is very common to have infrastructure projects be part of your urban renewal plan. Rehabbing and conserving existing buildings. I know that, of course, Oregon City has a, has an incredible inventory of historic existing buildings. Acquisition and improvement of properties. But with a, with a little asterisk, because up until and now I'm going to forget the date, 2000 and, now I'm going to guess, 2007-ish, urban renewal agencies had the power of condemnation for redevelopment. And it was a very powerful tool that could be used to in fact assemble land for redevelopment by a third party. And, you know, great examples of that are in downtown Portland. In the 80s, there was an assembly of four blocks that is now the Pioneer Place Shopping Center. That was four blocks in diverse ownership. Not everyone wanted to sell their property to the government. Condemnation was used in order to assemble that block. Since 2007, urban renewal agencies can no longer involuntarily assemble property for redevelopment. You can acquire property by condemnation to do street improvements or utility improvements, but not to turn around and sell it to a third party. So acquisition still happens. And it happens through voluntary purchase and sale. In this economy, as you might imagine, there are opportunities for urban renewal agencies to do some land assembly if they have the the appropriate projects and the appropriate funds. As I said before, an urban renewal agency exists according to state law in every city and county in the, in the state. But you don't have an urban renewal agency until you pass an ordinance that says, we have blighted areas in our city and we want to activate our urban renewal commission or our urban renewal agency. And we're going to get on this job of doing some, some urban renewal activities. And how you do that? Well, you already know that. You have an urban renewal plan. And your urban renewal plan authorizes certain projects and programs within a defined area of, of your city that, that is wherein you can use the special financial tool of tax increment financing to accomplish those projects and programs. When you adopt an urban renewal plan, there's also something called an urban renewal report that goes along with the plan. And that urban renewal report sets out all the technical background of the findings of blight and the a bunch of financial information related to impacts on overlapping taxing districts. And an estimate of how much money you're going to spend and how long it's going to take to pay off that debt. It's a, it's, the report is a technical document that goes along with the plan. The urban renewal plan, there's an interesting one sentence in the urban renewal law that frankly, I never paid a bit of attention to until it was brought up in a, in a lawsuit. Which I was not involved, I'm happy to say. But that sentence says that citizens shall be involved in every step of the adoption of an urban renewal plan. It's just a, it's a one-liner that's in like an intro paragraph. And then it goes on to describe all of the the items that have to be in an urban renewal plan, the outline of an urban renewal plan. And what that has been found to mean is that an urban renewal agency needs to be, you can certainly set up its own systems for citizen involvement and for citizen input. But they have to be open at every step of the process. There certainly was a history of creating urban renewal plans, which of course, again, are going to be the descriptions of these projects and these programs, by staff. Or by staff and consultants. And by, or by staff and consultants with some input from interested council members. And then a sort of full-blown urban renewal plan would appear on the agenda of a planning commission for public input. What has evolved, not just because of that lawsuit, but certainly what has evolved because of citizen interest in this tool, is that urban renewal plans are now developed usually beginning with a feasibility study. Just literally, do we really want to do this? And that feasibility study is often done with the assistance of public advisory committees who are made up of interested citizens who have said, you know, we want to be involved in this process. We want to see how this is really going to help us. So right at the beginning, although it is not required by, it's required by state law that you have citizen involvement, but no particular kind, you're going to have a lot of public input even at the feasibility level. Urban renewal agencies often have citizen advisory committees, multiple citizen advisory committees, while they are working on an urban renewal plan. A great example of that is a current plan being crafted in Beaverton, which has had its ups and downs. But one of the reasons that it kind of got slowed down was a very strong feeling that those citizen advisory boards hadn't had a full chance to review and comment. So the citizen involvement in developing the urban renewal plan certainly is something that has become very important to urban renewal agencies for their success, because you don't have buy-in to the plan. You're not going to do very much. But also, in order to have everyone understand what it is that's happening, what it's going to cost, what the outcomes are going to be before the plan actually, well, estimated to be, before the plan actually gets adopted. So public involvement at the front end, when you put together an urban renewal plan, is one of those lessons that has evolved, I would say, over the last 10 to 15 years. What can you do with an urban renewal plan? You already have an urban renewal plan, so you've got projects and programs, but in general, construction or improvement of streets, utilities and other public uses. Urban renewal certainly has been used to rehabilitate or construct public facilities, public buildings. Special note about that, there is a requirement that if your urban renewal plan includes the public building as a project, that you have to have a finding in your plan of how that public building serves and benefits the urban renewal area. Not just the total city, but rather the urban renewal area. And that was an addition to the law in the late 90s, based on controversy about using tax increment financing to construct, actually, the issue had to do with a library. And, you know, 100% financing of the library with tax increment. The, there is nothing illegal about doing that. However, because these findings need to be made, it certainly generates a lot more discussion about the appropriate use of your tax increment dollars within the scope of your plan and the work that you, the other work that you want to do. I talked a little bit about acquisition and improvement of property. That is the the idea that acquisition can now only be voluntary, except for public improvements. And the other thing that's kind of unique about urban renewal, other than the tax increment tool, which we'll talk about in a minute, is urban renewal agencies can actually sell property for something called their fair, its fair reuse value. Which means not its fair market value, not an appraised value, but rather the value that the urban renewal agency determines is appropriate to get the project done that you want to have done. So the disposition of property, and I know you all are working on a couple of big projects, but the disposition of property is a unique conversation when you're an urban renewal commissioner. Because there is a subjective judgment that has to go on there about what is it that, what is the right price to charge for this property that we now own in the light of what it is that we want to have accomplished under our plan. And I'm sure we'll talk some more about that. So why do people do urban renewal plans? Well, duh, it's the money, honey. This is a very unique financing tool called tax increment financing. And I know that you have this piece of paper that one of the consultants I work with a lot, Mr. Tashman, Jeff Tashman, put together. And on page four of his of his materials, is a very simple chart that actually describes how tax increment financing works. So at the beginning of, at the time that an urban renewal plan is adopted, the urban renewal agency notifies the tax assessor of the area of the plan. And the tax assessor does a calculation of the assessed value within that area. And that assessed value sometimes is called the frozen base. People talk about that. And Jeff, in fact, called it in his diagram, the certified frozen base. That means it's certified by the assessor. And that dollar amount is fixed throughout the life of the urban renewal plan, unless some other things that happen that we'll talk about in a little bit, particularly related to the 2009 urban renewal statutory amendments. Any amount that the assessed value within the area increases is called the increment. The increase in value. As you all know, the increment is key to funding urban renewal projects. Because it is an application of the tax rate against that increment that produces dollars for urban renewal projects. So a couple of things about this chart. Jeff comments under his total tax rate box. The, what the, the rate is that is used in order to figure urban renewal incremental funds is the permanent rates of all of the overlapping taxing districts within the planned area. Local option rates and bond rates, however, only for bonds with local options that were approved before November 1st of 2001. So if there is a local option levy that is passed in November, that local option levy will not be divided in order to produce tax increment funds. And you can see that that makes a heck of a lot of sense, because if you're adopting, or either a bond issue or a local option levy, there's a fixed amount of money you're trying to raise here. And to divide it off to go to urban renewal projects is inconsistent with that, the public's desire to fund that particular item, either the bonds or the local options. So total tax rate gets multiplied by all of the assessed value in the area. And then you produce, of course, taxes. Again, very simple. You produce taxes. The taxes that are produced by multiplying those rates against the increment are the rates, are the taxes that are used by urban, by the urban renewal agency. The taxes that are produced, yes?
I have a quick question too. And I think this probably is the right time to ask it. This diagram, it's total tax rates times assessed value in the urban renewal area equals tax revenues. But in Oregon City, everybody in town has urban renewal on their property tax statement. So what is the dynamic of that taxation outside of the urban renewal district?
Okay. The, the actual amount, right now what I'm talking about is the amount of money you're going to get in your pocket as an urban renewal agency. How the urban renewal, that, how that amount is collected is directed by a different part of the statute. And what the statute says is that, once the amount is figured, then the assessor goes through a formula, which I do not pretend to understand, but goes through a formula that distributes that amount of money. Now remember, this is a division of taxes, it's not an extra tax. But it basically distributes the the division of taxes, if you will, within the entire municipality. That's a state requirement to to spread the division of the taxes, but not to change the amount of the taxes. Now, there's actually a couple of political reasons that it was done that way. The first one was that there are some overlapping taxing districts that have huge amounts of their area within an urban renewal area and very little outside the urban renewal area. But they, for example, cover an entire municipality. A school district is a, is a good example. And so if you only divided the taxes from the properties that were within the urban renewal area, you would be taking a huge amount away from that school, that one school district. Whereas if you had another school district that was also operating within the municipality, they would not be sharing in the, that division of taxes. And there was a sense from school districts particularly, but also some other special districts, that it was appropriate that if the municipality was the governing body that was adopting this urban renewal plan, then all of the taxing districts within the municipality needed to share in that division of taxes. So it is, it is spread among the the tax, you know, the office being gored here are the other taxing districts. So it is spread among the other taxing districts based upon the municipal boundaries, as opposed to based upon the smaller area.
I'm sorry, I really didn't follow that very well.
I'm sure you didn't, because it's
Million dollars of increment in the district. And that million dollars is used for projects. How does that million dollars, which is the tax rate times the increment in a district, how does that relate to money outside of the district? Where you see this line item on the property. How does it relate to the increment?
Okay, the, again, the increment is used for the purpose of calculating the dollar amount. When the
That's the available monies for the project.
Exactly, exactly.
How does the increment money relate to the money that comes to the coffers of the city from outside the district?
Because the entire increment is not being collected inside the area. That million dollars, under state law, that million dollars is being collected throughout the municipality. So that was a political decision that was made to not take all the million dollars from the taxing districts that only were within that small area. But rather take the million dollars
If the million dollars coming into the agency and the amount that's coming in from the district is less than a million dollars.
Correct.
So the, the county tax assessor figures out what the rate, the tax rate should be in the district to generate a million dollars. And then readjusts it, regiggers it and spreads it out evenly throughout all taxpayers? Or is it weighted in some way against the district?
There is a, again, there's a formula that, you know, I would be happy to, you know, get into more detail if I had it in front of me, but I have to tell you, I don't know the formula by heart. But there is a concept that's called shared property value that has to do with the overlapping taxing districts within the urban renewal area and how that ratio is then spread as to those taxing districts within the entire municipality. I mean, I kind of don't know what else to tell you other than, the idea was that as long as you are taking the million dollars from the overlapping taxing districts who are within, who are within the area, but but then, then that's an okay thing to do. But there, the fact that they are out there in the municipality should also be taken into consideration. Again, I, I'm sorry, I'm, you know, I'm flat footed on the formula. But the state, the state law, the state law basically says there's a, there is a formula that's applied in order to apply it to the entire, to divide the taxes in the entire municipality.
As long as you have a statement there, that increment there is something that is essentially shared by all the districts that are in there. And so, my understanding, for example, unless we have no districts form, no districts form, or anything of that nature, when the urban renewal agency disappears, my total taxes don't increase, they just get redistributed.
Correct, that's correct. So, the, what appears on your tax bill is information in order to show you that an urban, an amount for urban renewal is not going to those, all those other taxing districts that are listed on your tax bill. Part of it is in fact going to urban renewal. And that's, that's an informational statement that again was required by, it's not required by the law, it was required by administrative rule.
This is, this is very interesting, because if, if the, if we go through termination of a urban renewal district, the money, all of this money then comes back, goes back to the normal sources that it would have, that it's been actually coming from. But by saying that, then, everyone is kind of sharing in the cost, i.e. that each of the entities, including library districts, fire districts, everyone, municipalities, everyone is, is, is sharing. So, in effect, it's reducing the revenue to the operating entities.
Well, that's correct. Well, while tax increment is working, there is not a reduction, but there's what, there's the concept of forgone revenues. They're not getting the taxes off of the increase in value. That's correct.
So, there's always a statement that it's not costing us any money, because this is new revenue coming in from the division of taxes. But in reality, a city is losing revenue. And they have to pay for services, they have to either reduce services or create more tax income to cover that same service level that they have obligated to, or has been a new obligation as a direct result of urban renewal district going in, creating a trap, more need for cops, more need for fire, more need for kids or schools, or whatever it may be. So, in reality, it does have a, an effect, going back of, of reducing revenue to outside entities. And somewhere, somehow, somebody's paying or having reduced services.
Couple of comments in general, I agree with what you're saying. I would object to the use of the word reducing. I, I agree with you that the overlapping taxing districts do not have access to the increase in value above that frozen base. So, to the extent that an increase in assessed value, it tends to sense that you make an assumption that every increase in assessed value that you do not have access to is a reduction in taxes to the overlapping taxing districts, then what you're saying is true. But I guess I would suggest that the idea of urban renewal is to increase the assessed value, so that when those urban renewal debt, that urban renewal debt is paid off, then all of the taxing districts benefit. Now, I want to make just one other comment about the services question. That's a huge issue. I absolutely agree with you. The question of providing services right now in Oregon at all levels is huge. And the idea of urban renewal creating more improvements that require, you know, more firemen, or, you know, more police protection, or whatever it is, is a discussion that always needs to, there's actually a section in the report I talked about earlier that requires you to analyze, what are the service impacts of adopting this urban renewal plan? It's why this conversation with the special district conversations, with counties conversations, with, I mean, with yourselves, about, you know, what is it that you are creating here that you're not going to be able to operate? Because as you know, urban renewal funds can't be used for operation. So, that is a real tough discussion. And it's a discussion that is had, I hope, every time that urban renewal plans are adopted, because there is going to be a period of time, potentially, and this isn't always true, where increased services and the cost of those increased services are not met by the frozen base. Okay, by the tax rate times the frozen base. That having been said, I just, as I said, I had the pleasure of being in our hallowed halls in Salem this morning, was having a conversation with one of the rabbius with the fire districts. And his comment was that they, you know, as long as they, these urban renewal plans don't go on forever, they actually have found that they can use urban renewal plans to get a lot of things they can't otherwise get, like sprinkled buildings. Like, if you tear downs and dilapidate stuff and build new, that's a way less fire risk stuff. You're building streets that have good signals and we've got fire, you know, fire signal capability. So, I don't disagree with you that operating at all, you know, operating expenses at all levels in municipal government right now is a terrific challenge. But I, I would at least suggest to you that the urban renewal funds used for certain kinds of infrastructure, used for other kinds of improvements, can in fact even out some of that, some of that.
In our case, the, our urban renewal district for Oregon City is 33 years old, 1978. The frozen tax base at that time, obviously incrementally, was a lot less in its obligation for funding services. So, it's been frozen then, and if it goes on for another 20 years, the implications of, of funding or paying for all of these new obligations since 1978 really put a stress on everyone, because it, maybe it should have ended, but they never had a termination or a plan to bring it to termination, it seems.
Why, why you have a commission to work that out?
Can I ask, how often is the urban renewal report, the technical report that evaluates those impacts? How, how often is that, we submit it, or we prepare? Is it with every amendment, or is it just at the beginning of the plan?
With every amendment.
Okay.
Amendments to the plan. There is, I will say, you know, I mean, I've unfortunately been doing this so long that I also know where some of the skeletons are. So, do you, the question is that, or the, the minor, minor urban renewal amendments, and you have in your urban renewal plan a system for substantial amendments, and then maybe minor amendments. And I have to say, I don't know your plan intimately. But there was a practice where if, if an urban renewal agency did a minor amendment to the plan, they didn't update the report. I don't let my clients do that, but, you know, so, yes.
I wanted to interject, because I have a paramount background in urban renewal in Oregon City. And I do know that Commissioner Edgar, from a, from a tax increment standpoint in the downtown district, it's taken years to actually increase that base. So, it was years and years and years where we really didn't see how much of the tax increment increased whatsoever downtown. And I still, I think it's still kind of slowly inching up, because we never really had a lot of money to do projects downtown. Excuse me. But I'm, if you'd like, I'm sure that David Wimmer and I could get your information on how the tax base in downtown Oregon City has progressed throughout the years.
There, there was an amendment, the last plan amendment we had was in 07, and that also included a report.
I have a question now. The last legislator's session, Speaker of the House, Representative Hunt, sent a letter saying that they've worked out an agreement with the special districts and the schools so they can not suffer because of urban renewal. Is that not correct?
If that's an interesting letter, in fact, it went out. I was going to talk a little bit about new law. And I would, I would be happy to address the 2009 sort of major changes. I thought you were going to say something else in relation to a letter from Representative Hunt, because what happened in 2009 was that there has been a several session, a series of discussions with special districts, primarily the SDAO, the fire districts, the counties, about impacts of urban renewal. And there have been various runs at urban renewal reform that the urban renewal agencies and their proponents have opposed. Just opposed, 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 opposed. And in actually 2007, there was an informal group that involved the Association of Urban Development Agencies, League of Oregon Cities, and these SDAO, and the fire districts, and the parks and rec districts, sat down and worked on some common improvements that could be made. Unfortunately, the 2007 ideas that came out of that informal group did not see the light of day because of some very strong lobbying interests that weren't interested in DeHunt. In 2009, Representative Hunt, along with others, basically sent the message, both personally and in writing, that he had had enough, and a lot of the legislators had had enough of this urban renewal controversy. And if we were, if the interested parties were not going to come together and come up with some way to recognize the benefits of urban renewal, but the really true impacts on these other districts, and come up with a plan that would help limit urban renewal plans and their longevity and the amount of their collections, that frankly, he was going to do, of course. So, sitting back on our heels, we spent, and I say we, because I had the pleasure of being part of the conversation, but it was literally a group of probably 30 people sitting around the table. And the result was House Bill 3056. And I have a short summary of its major, of its major provisions is on page seven. And so, in direct answer to your question, what House Bill 3056 did was limit by time and limit by amount, how much and how long tax increment could be collected. That's kind of the, the quickie summary. So, held harmless? No. Reduced impact? I believe yes, although we are only a year and a half into the effective, you know, date of the bill. So, just kind of, not to get overly technical here, but, but these are significant changes and significant limitations that kick in for a new urban renewal plan, but they also kick in if there were to be a substantial amendment to your urban renewal plan, like you wanted to increase your maximum indebtedness. You wanted to increase the amount of money we're going to spend for urban renewal. So, the first thing, and this is, they are on page seven of the materials, is there is a limit on how big your maximum indebtedness under your plan can be. And let me step back a little bit. We have always argued that this idea of a maximum indebtedness amount was the major controller for urban renewal expenditures, because what the law says is you can't incur any more debt than some number you put in your plan. And if you didn't have one because you existed before 1996, you had to put one in by 1998. And you can't borrow any more money than that. And then we pay that off, and you're done. And that was the concept of maximum indebtedness. Well, it didn't say you couldn't amend your plan. And it didn't say you couldn't amend your plan to increase your maximum indebtedness. And unfortunately, some very high profile increases in maximum indebtedness were proposed. I don't know if it's just the, you know, the urban renewal wonks of the world, but the whole issue of going from approximately $135 million maximum indebtedness in the River District in Portland to $450 million was a huge lightning rod. Okay, that, I mean, that's what happens, is people push things to the edge, and then you have the need for reform. So, there are now limits on how big your maximum indebtedness can be. And there's a little chart, this chart is literally in the statute. Yes, unless you do a substantial amendment that increases your maximum indebtedness.
Can we roll it back? Can, if we wanted to reduce our maximum level of indebtedness to a new lower level, so that we could arrive at an earlier termination of an, of our district? Is that something that's relatively easy?
It depends upon what your current outstanding indebtedness is. I mean, you obviously cannot do anything that impairs your current contracts. You have the ability to amend your plan. Your plan has a statement of your maximum indebtedness. However, I would like to make a couple of comments about that, because there are sort of better techniques that have been built into the law because of this 2009 amendment. So, for example, we now have a specific threshold at which, when you start collecting 10%, if your tax increment in, income in any year exceeds 10% of your maximum indebtedness, excuse me, yes, the original maximum indebtedness under the plan, you have to start sharing your tip money with the overlapping taxing districts. So, it initially starts out that you share 75, they get 75% if you reach that threshold. And if you go to 12%, then you have to give them 100% of the tax increment. What that basically means is the urban renewal plan at that point would not be collecting any more than 10 or 12% of its maximum indebtedness. That would be the total amount that they would collect, that you would collect in order to pay off your debt. So, there are, with this new law, this idea of there's some amount over which you just can't keep collecting and continuing to run your plan at that high rate. So, that's one, one method that's built into the statute, and that's automatic. You reach those thresholds, the assessor's going to do the calculation, and that's the way it's going to be. The other thing that was put in was for the purpose of giving flexibility to urban renewal agencies, and it's a concept that actually existed right after Measure 5 was adopted. Measure 5, you know, clearly creating quite a bit of havoc with the property tax system. In Portland, for example, basically, the Portland City Council wanted the ability to tell PDC to stop collecting increment. Don't collect any while we figure out what the heck has happened to us under Measure 5. So, the legislature back then passed something they called an under levy, for lack of a better statement. It basically said, you urban renewal agency each year can tell us how much you want to collect. And you don't have to collect everything you're entitled to. After Measure 50, because of the change in the tax system that moved it to a rate-based system and the other complexities, you couldn't give somebody a number, you know, the assessor a number. So, that idea of under levy, or I should say, that authority for under levy went away. of under levy, or I should say, that authority for under levy went away. So, you could no longer say, "You know what? We don't need $20,000 this year. We just want $100,000 this year," and give that other stuff back to the overlapping tax industries. There is now a provision in the law that says you have that authority back, and you can exercise it on an annual basis, or you can exercise it permanently. So, back to your point, you can reduce the, you can, excuse me, you can increase the frozen base and thereby reduce the amount of your incremental tax collections. And again, you can do that on an annual basis, which is not a good idea, but my personal point of view is not a good idea, because you don't know what next year's going to bring. But if you sincerely looked through your plan, looked at the projects you had left to do, looked at your outstanding debt and your collection level, you could say, "We don't need this." Now, this is even a new concept. Urban renewal, even before Measure 5, urban renewal agencies have used the only tool they had, which was cutting off area, geographic area, you know, and they would say, "Okay, we are, you know, we've got plenty of increment. We're done with that project that we did, so we'll just slice off that little piece." Clackamas County is a classic example. They've done that many times in both of their bigger renewal plans, their industrial plan and their town center plan. It is that, basically, the idea was, "Well, is there a way we can do the same thing, but not have to cut out area?" Because we might have some projects we still want to finish in that geographic area, but reduce the amount, the impact on the overlapping districts. This is a decision, however, that I share with you, because you asked, I mean, it's right here in the material, I would have shared it with you anyway, but I share it with you with a bit of caution, because I think that the decision to increase the frozen base is, you know, it has to be, I think, pretty well analyzed financially, to make sure that what it is you still have left to do, if indeed you're choosing to continue with your plan, is properly financed. And then, obviously, you have to respect the outstanding debt that you already have. So, that mechanism exists, and that's why I wanted to kind of divert the question a little bit to what you already have. Any other questions on that part? I have a section on page seven about major policy issues in urban renewal plans, and we touched on some of these already. There's certainly a requirement for increased citizen participation, but also public understanding about how urban renewal works and the division of taxes notion, the early and strategic involvement of the taxing districts, how you draw your boundaries. There are certainly issues related to drawing a boundary so that you capture a building that's under construction, and wow, instantly you have increment. But, you know, that building probably wasn't there because you had urban renewal tools, you know, those kinds of questions. The use of urban renewal for public buildings is a very big policy issue that every urban renewal agency struggles with. There is a sort of best practices notion that has been worked up by the association, by the statewide association, about this concept of sort of proportionality, that if you're working on a public facility, take a look at how it relates to the area, but also how does it relate to the rest of the city, and kind of what's an appropriate proportion that the TIP might fund. Again, not illegal to fund all you want. There's certainly this notion of spending money, and I know you all have had this conversation, spending tax increment funds on projects that do not instantly create increment, and I don't mean instantly is probably a bad word, that do not appear that they will create increment. Because remember, to create increment, you have to have private investment. It has to be a taxable piece of property that's producing increment. And the examples that were listed here that were criticized was a performing arts center in Newport and the east side Esplanade, which is a walkway along the east side of the Lamont River in Portland. And then paying for services is right here on the list. We've talked a little bit about that. And then, the length of tax increment financing, and many of you may know of a recent attempt to extend the maximum indebtedness of the Tuolleton Downtown District, that in the light of very serious public pushback, did not go forward. And so, that downtown Tuolleton urban renewal area is no longer collecting tax increment as of June 30th of 2011. 2010, excuse me, I'm in the wrong year. 2010. So, the length of plans, the timing of projects, the growth of increment, all kind of go into that.
On page four, there's a couple of comments that I didn't quite understand. And that has to do with who's on the hook for these tax increment financing bonds. It says here, debt issued, bottom of page four, bonds are issued by the agency with no other credit backstop. Debt service is only payable from the tax increment, but it's practical that a municipal default happens. And then the next one, next bullet on the next page, commonly lenders are now requiring full faith and credit pledges. I'm just kind of wondering, I always thought tax increment financing is just a little bit more extensive than a HEO bond, because it wasn't quite as secure, but it sounds like they're about the same now. What's the...
I will clarify. Tax increment bonds, for a lot of years, were sold, basically, you know, and depending upon the age and the success of a district, if you already had a ton of tax increment coming in that was not yet committed to debt, if a bond underwriter could look at that and say, you know, "These bonds are golden. We don't need any other kinds of guarantees," you could issue bonds based only on projected revenues, okay? Projected tax increment revenues. The... I actually checked on this, because I was curious to know what the public bonding market is doing now with tax increment bonds. And I was told by a prominent bond attorney that the latest bond issue that he had seen that was TIP-only, tax increment only, was the bond from the city of Port, or the, it's an odd thing where it's actually the city that issues PDC's bonds, but that's an aside, because only the TIP was pledged. Only the TIP was pledged, no group full faith and credit city backup, but it was required two times coverage of the debt service in the TIP fund, in the TIP projections. So, if the debt service was going to be $1 million a year, the TIP projections had to show $2 million coming in uncommitted. So, what happened in the markets is that anything that, in the public markets, okay, and then we'll talk a little bit about private placement, but in the public markets, even tried and true bonds of mature agencies in mature districts like Portland are requiring very large coverage rates. So, that's why on the next page, it says, "Most tax increment bonds to be sold in the public marketplace require the backstop of the full faith and credit of the municipality."
So, the follow-up question to that is, if that's what happens, and the city then basically pledges its full faith and credit behind an agency bond, isn't that basically the city taking on the debt?
Should the TIP not come in? Correct. Correct. I mean, the TIP is always the first, you know, the first pledge, but you're correct. A little bit more comment on that, which is, there has traditionally been a pretty active private placement market for TIP bonds, meaning they are not publicly sold with an underwriter and a bond council and all that, but rather sold to institutions. Bank of America, US Bank have been players in the metro area in the past. They, their requirements are going to vary depending upon, you know, what their portfolio of this kind of debt can tolerate. And certainly, small urban renewal agencies often issue debt by something as simple as a line of credit. I've got a, I've got a, urban renewal agency's got a line of credit with a community bank, you know, in their little community. So, you know, how people get their, get their funds varies a lot, you know, from that public offering to large private placements to smaller borrowings, you know, with the one pager that you flip over from community banks. So, your points, I'll take.
The question is, can we reset an urban renewal district? Kind of like, what I was trying to achieve is get to a point where we, where we increase or we change the frozen base to a current level, as long as we cover all of the bonded indebtedness that is out there. So, right now, we're, we're getting 3% annual increase in assessed values, and we have some growth coming in. Is there a way that an existing or mature urban renewal district, such as what we have, 33 years old, where we could change, move to a new certified frozen base?
As I said before, under the 2009 legislation, you can adjust the frozen base number. And where you adjust it to is the decision. So, that's, I mean, it's, it would be a tough, you know, again, a decision requiring a lot of considerations, I think, but it can be done.
Can urban renewal districts, they expand it in area, but to such a small extent that it would require a major amendment?
Under 1% boundary change, does not require a substantial amendment. And then, there are also some limitations on the overall increase that you can do. 20% of your original plan area is the maximum that you can increase the area. And there's also a limitation about you can't be any larger, your urban renewal, excuse me, all of the areas that are in urban renewal can't be more than 25% of all of the area of your city. So, there's like three levels of limitation there, but yes. Okay. Pages eight through 10 of the outline are, or eight through 11 of the outline are, are basically procedural steps to establishing an urban renewal plan or an urban renewal program. I think since you all are, unless you're particularly interested in the process, if you all have, you know, you have an urban renewal area, you're not adopting an urban renewal plan, and you can certainly look at this, and if you have any questions, having read it, I'd be happy to answer them, but otherwise, I'm going to wade into a little bit deeper water, although I'm pretty deep now.
Quickly on that, if we cut off certain areas that are currently in our plan area, and then establish a new urban renewal district, or multiple new urban renewal districts, by carving off some of these areas to put them in more manageable and more defined plans and return on investment portfolios, you might say, is that something that's reasonably done?
The key is, if you are carving off parts of old urban renewal areas, you have to be sure that if you're going to put them in a new one, that there's, that the new urban renewal area as a whole is blighted. So, for example, you know, I mean, if you carved off something that you had, you know, induced some swanky new investment, and then you said, "Well, we're going to move that over there, because, boy, it's just, you know, it's a really big assessed value that we want to use."
Well, we have a mill that's closing, is definitely...
Not so swanky, uh-huh. But no, I, so the answer is, in fact, Portland's going through that right now. They're closing down, in a stepped, phased way, their oldest, well, the oldest existing one, their downtown waterfront urban renewal area, and they are going to create another, they're looking at creating another urban renewal area that will pull in part of that, part of some areas around Portland State, and make a new urban renewal area. So, so yes, but you have to make all the same findings on your new, on your new plan. Okay. So, Dan asked me an interesting question, and it seemed like it would be really simple to answer, but it's not, which is, "Can you give us some examples of some, some good plans and some bad plans?" And the problem with, the first thing I said to him was, "Define that." You know, "What's a good one? What's a bad one?" And I, I don't know, did you send out this little list that I had? Okay. In thinking about that a little bit, I grew from some other materials that I worked on in the past for other presentations, and also some people who are smarter than I am, to talk a little bit about how you measure success. Because one of the things that used to be every two years, and now it's going to be every year, we get asked as an organization or as a group of urban renewal agencies is, "So, what did you do for us lately?" You know, "What is it that urban renewal is really accomplishing?" And it is hard to do measurement, because it depends upon what you were trying to accomplish. So, you can't just say, "Oh, we've been really successful. We attracted, you know, 400 jobs to a site." Like, you know, Enterprise Zone could say, "Oh, we got this great, you know, plant, and we've got all these new jobs." Because urban renewal is a local tool, and it's doing different things for different communities, it's really hard to measure success. So, that's this little one pager that's too tight together in terms of spacing, but really, when you look at what's successful and what isn't, you have to start from what were you trying to do? And so, these were some examples of things that urban renewal agencies might try to do, and then how you would measure whether or not you were successful. So, for example, what we were trying to do was revitalize the physical improvements in the area. Well, did you get your environmental cleanup done? Did those physical improvements, those facade programs, you know, do you have lots of people participating to fix up their facades on the main street? Were there a bunch of empty buildings that were not being used according to the city plans? You know, people talk about, "Oh, the River District is so rich, because the Pearl District is in the middle of that." Well, remember what the Pearl District was, you know, it was warehouse, and, you know, and some urban pioneers, yes. But, and there's really, in the Pearl District, very little public investment. There's only like $2 million in the parking structure that went into what we call the Pearl District. Now, there's, you know, a whole bunch of other things that happened in the River District, but that is an example of, "Whoa, I guess we have a more profitable use of those warehouse buildings, their condos, you know, or their retail, or their office space." So, if your goal was, "Let's make this area physically more attractive to business and to residents," then you would measure it by, "Well, how many of those did we do?" Okay, so that's pretty useful. If your goal is, and this really relates sort of to, more to a project than a plan, but if your goal is, when you're looking at whether or not to undertake a project, how much tax increment? We need more tax increment in this district to do all these projects that have been sitting unfunded for 20 years. So, we want to do a project that's going to be highly successful in producing a lot of increment. So, that's pretty easy to measure. You know, there's a, there's a calculation. How much is it going to kick off in the next five, 10, 15 years? I think you guys actually have a feasibility study on the project that you're working on right now. Maybe your, your goal is, we've got an area that is zoned for industrial and commercial use, and what we have there is a bunch of abandoned buildings. We need to create businesses, or not create businesses, but rather entice businesses and entice employers to come into this area. and entice employers to come into this area. And then, of course, your measure would be, well, how many jobs did you get in your area? What do those jobs look like? Are they um, you know, high wage jobs, um, and that sort of thing? Um, another goal might be, you know, we don't have that much TIF money. What we wanna do is make it as uh profitable as possible if we're going to invest our dollars, meaning what's our leverage of the public to the private dollars? And um, you know, what that ratio ought to be usually depends upon all that other stuff that you're trying to accomplish. Um, but, you know, how, if, for example, you're doing something like a large retail mall, for example, you might wanna consider, for example, well, how much are we putting in? How much are they putting in? How much of the, you know, the banks, and what's the risk that the banks are taking? Where are the investors? And then, what else is this gonna do for us in Oregon City besides have a clean new mall? You know, is it going to kick off? We used to call it halo effect, you know, what other businesses, what other um uh job creation uh types of things are actually going to be attracted because you made one investment? I mean, Pioneer Place, they actually did, PC did a, a halo analysis, and I, I can't remember the statistics anymore, but many of you lived in the Portland area uh prior to um uh nineteen ninety-one, and you know what was there. And downtown Portland was, you know, they, there was Pioneer Courthouse Square had been invested in, and there was New Nordstrom, and then there were lots of retail in various conditions, lots of office in various conditions. Four blocks in the middle of that, and now look at the rest of it. I mean, that it brought in people who wanted to be part of that trend setting um development. So, that's, that's what I mean when I'm talking about halo effect. Um, and then the final one actually relates to if your PDC, for example, and a lot of other agencies actually make loans to um pu- uh private property owners for various purposes of improving their properties. And you know, sort of a what's your rate of return? What do you, you know, how much do you wanna get back? Is this a good loan kind of thing? So, um, with that in mind, I did take a little bit of a shot at um sort of what are some of the good ones and, and maybe some of the not so good ones. And there, I want to commend to you, because you have nothing else to do in your spare time, taking a, a little run through uh a written piece that is now outdated, unfortunately, and I was saying to Dan ahead of this meeting, it'd be really interesting to do a where are they now, um, analysis. But it's on the Aora website, which I cited on the first page of these materials, and it's called History of Urban Renewal. And again, it happens to be authored by Tasman Johnson, which Jeff Tasman is one of the partners, but he had through and examined uh multiple urban renewal agencies, sort of through the years, through this evolution of the urban renewal tool. And um, so I, I kinda pulled a couple more of those that I, that I didn't include on this list, but um, I'll just, I'll pull out just a couple of these to highlight, and um, you know, you can think about whether this is how, you know, you would measure success. Um, there's just recently uh an article in the Salem paper about, uh, City of Salem is retiring uh one of its oldest urban renewal areas. It's uh thirty-plus years old. It was uh eighteen blocks in the area around uh City Hall in Salem, if you know that area. It's called the Pringle Creek area. Um, they, uh, the frozen base was initially eighteen point nine million, and in two thousand and seven, it was fifty-nine point one million. However, while this plan is being closed now, it actually stopped collecting increments in nineteen ninety-three. So, that's because they had sufficient dollars to pay off their debt. They continued to do their projects with the proceeds of their debt, but, you know, they were done with the collection, the division of taxes. Um, they attracted, there's obviously a government component, there's a library component, there's a parking component, a community center, all of which are public improvements that you might look at and say, okay, so, you know, how is that creating TIF? Well, they have office buildings, they have, uh, some of you may have seen it's now pretty dated, pretty ugly, the safe office building, the workers' comp people, that's in the Pringle Creek area. The hospital expanded in the Pringle Creek area, which, part of which is taxable. Um, so, they had uh a really good, you know, a really good run, they paid off their debt, they really did transform this eighteen blocks in their city, and, you know, and they're, they're very proud of that. Um, another example, I, I mentioned Clackamas County um earlier, and I am not deeply familiar with the Clackamas Industrial District, other than to know that um it ran for about twenty years. Um, tons of infrastructure improvements that created um the access that we now all sort of take for granted in that um Sunnyside Industrial Area. Um, in order to help out the impacts on um other taxing districts, they actually built a fire station as part of the, as part of the urban renewal uh projects, and um that, that district is now closed, and, you know, has returned all of their assessed value to the, to the taxing, to the tax rules. Um, and a couple of items, and I'll come back to Talent in a minute, because I would say she's my favorite client, because she's a one-man band in Talent, Oregon. Do you know where Talent is? All in favor? Okay. Um, and I will talk about it a little bit. Um, in nineteen ninety-one, um, they set out to um redo the historic Talent Downtown, which had problems of, you know, dilapidated buildings, uh, tons of empty land where properties had been demolished. Um, it has railroad tracks going through the middle of it, but, but probably the most um interesting feature that was a disincentive to investment was the fact that half of the downtown had diagonal streets, and the other half had straight streets, and they didn't line up. And so, you can't get there from here. And um, so, the uh, the City Council of Talent formed an urban renewal area for the purpose of mostly infrastructure projects, but, and they are now, uh, they have uh sat down, the commission is like you, a combination of city councilors and uh private citizens. They have sat down, they have worked out their final project, which will be that which gets rid of those diagonal connections, um, and they are set to sunset in two thousand and fourteen. They have a fixed date at which they will be done, and, you know, that's, that is what it is. And they have been, talking about debt, um, they have actually been selling um traditional publicly offered bonds all along, and doing it with a, with a bat saw, um, particularly in the last, the last go-round. But they have, um, because they came from such nothing, their increase in um incremental value has been extraordinary, you know, um, hundreds of percentages, because every time something got built, it went from land value to improvement value. So, they have had um a very successful and very um well-received urban renewal plan. One of the kind of fun things they did was managed to, in the middle of all of this infrastructure, was a community theater that basically one wall was gonna go for this new uh street that needed to be built. And they worked with that community, who was ready to um move back to Ashland, basically. And they worked with that community theater uh for, over the course of a couple of years, managed to uh acquire property that the theater could then buy and move to, and the theater will actually be open for this summer season. So, I mean, there's, those are the kinds of community successes that you look out there and you say, well, why was this a success? Well, they did everything they said they were gonna do, and besides that, they saved the community theater. You know, I mean, those are, those are the kinds of things that people call success. Couple of comments about Portland, um, because Portland's a, you know, a big lightning rod, um, uh, very large urban renewal increments in their older areas. Um, I mentioned the fact that um the downtown waterfront plan was adopted in nineteen seventy-six. Um, it is uh, it includes parts of downtown that we just kinda take for granted, all the waterfront improvements, the river place improvements. I talked about Pioneer Place, Pioneer Courthouse Square, um, the, the parking structures that are in downtown, um, the urban renewal area, um, obviously funded part of the light rail. I mean, it, it was a huge economic engine to create what we now think of as downtown Portland, but it's time to let go. And that was, they did a ci- you know, a study that includes citizens, advisory groups, and actually um Airport Way, which I'll talk about in a minute, downtown waterfront, and the South Park Blocks urban renewal areas are all being phased out, and um, can't remember the outside date when they'll be gone, but it's within the next three to four years. Um, it's gonna be a huge incremental uptick, you know, assessed value uptick for all the overlapping taxing districts, and, you know, the county and the city, and the school districts obviously being the big beneficiaries in, in downtown Portland. Um, Airport Way is an interesting success story because um it was very controversial at the beginning, because how is it that a strawberry field is blighted? And in order to put together the blocks of land that PDC thought were key in, to offer for redevelopment, which we now look at as the intersection of, you know, two oh five and Airport Way, and the Shiloh Inn, and that Big Box Center, and, you know, all that stuff, um, they had to do condemnation. And you can only condemn for, back then, you know, you could condemn for third-party use, but, you know, you had to show the public purpose, and the public purpose was securing blight. Well, um, it was an interesting condemnation case. They were allowed to go ahead, the, the blight findings were upheld, but it was the first time that at least the city of Portland had taken on an urban renewal plan um in an area that was not in a traditional sense blighted. And so, um, that urban renewal area uh was adopted for the purpose of maximizing all of that transportation uh infrastructure altogether in one place, and maximizing it for industrial and commercial use. That was the purpose. They have accomplished their purpose, and they're shutting down. And so, that's an example, I call it success, because they had a purpose and they accomplished it. Um, you all know about Rhonler Acres, so I won't talk about that. That's, isn't it nice when Intel walks through your door and produces however many billions in, in assessed value? But um, they again, of course, have, have not been collecting tax increment for, for some period of time, and actually closed their district a few years ago.
Some rule of, I was told, and I don't know this fact, but isn't there some auto- automatic uh benchmarks that, that are there that require you to shut down a urban renewal district, you know, once its debt load and its obligations are fully uh covered?
Yes, that's absolutely right. If, uh, there's a section in the law that says, if you find that, which is an interesting way to say it, if you find that you have either paid off your maximum indebtedness, or you have sufficient funds, you have collected sufficient tax increment, and it's sitting in your, they call it a special fund, it's a technical term in the law, sounds odd, but there you have it. Um, you find that you have actually collected enough money to cover your debt, but you don't owe the payments yet, so you're gonna leave it in, you know, your special fund and pay it out according to the terms of your contract on your debt. When you have done that, you are required to notify the assessor, and the assessor stops sending tax increment, stops sending you funds, stops dividing the taxes. And there's no, in Oregon, there's no way to turn it back on, except to start over, which means, of course, you would reset your frozen base. So, yes, absolutely. And interestingly, the bill I was specifying on, I should say, the bill I was not specifying on this morning, had to do with giving the assessor advanced notice of that, so that all, there would be a, a, a public finding a year in advance that we're probably not gonna need any more TIF, we're not gonna need any more TIF after this fiscal year, whichever that fiscal year is. And the idea of me, that then, um, you know, the public understands what's going on, and, you know, you close down your projects, and you're done.
If we have a big windfall with a, let's say, a shopping center comes in and we create, and I mean, and we create two hundred million dollars worth of new assessed value, and the increment coming in from it now exceeds uh the bonding loads that we have, uh, or the indebtedness that we have now incurred, even though our, our maximum level of indebtedness that we're authorized to go to.
Oh, I see your question.
It's, is, is much higher, but what we have done, we have now, we have adequate increment and an, and income coming in that will cover all known indebtedness.
Okay, uh, very, very good decision there, and I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. It used to be that it was what your current debt is. It is now maximum indebtedness. So, you do not need to turn off the spigot until you have reached your maximum indebtedness. You can choose to turn off the spigot during, in the ways that I described earlier, but you do not have to, the, the actual, you're done, is now maximum indebtedness. Um, let's see, maybe I should just ask, are there any other questions before I yammer on about a couple of? Could, could you confirm um what the uh current tax assessed value is in the district? I think it's about seventy-four and a half percent.
I was gonna ask for plenty of structure, you know?
I don't think you answered my question. Um, I'm asking about what is the, the ratio or the percentage in our taxing district that, well, I say in our, in our municipal district that's used as the reference that applies to the, that would, that would drive the tax assessed value of a project within the urban renewal district?
Yeah, that's seventy-four percent.
Yeah. It's like, that, that's where, okay, the state of Oregon puts those numbers out in?
No, no, it's the, 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 the assessor does, based on real market value versus assessed value.
Right, and Oregon, that's part of revenue does publish those numbers, but they're in, in arrears?
The county is, publishes them every year when they put out the tax assessments.
Okay. So, okay, thank you.
I'd like to figure out a way to sum my, all the districts, everybody in the city, favorite. Sure. I thought, I thought all of this, too. I was sitting back in the room, you, you guys wanna?
Yes.
No. I've been struggling with this thing for years. I think they're looking at this wall, I think this wall, I could use this wall as a diagram. Okay, this, this is just perfect, it says city, already city, so we have, so each one of these panels is a tax code, we have several different tax codes within the Oregon city. And they're all, they're basically seventeen dollars a thousand, but we're not gonna assume this one with the OAN, that's the sixty-two oh fifty-seven, which is the urban renewal tax code, which the frozen value is everything below that the Oregon sign, and the acre is everything above it. You know, we're gonna step back, but I tried to do this with Jim's, this commission to see the other day, we both ended up more confused when we left. All municipalities submit their permanent tax rate when they submit their taxes. You know, like Corrie G says, where ours was gonna be four dollars and fifteen cents. So, the assessor takes all those things and takes the value with everything except the increment, so everything except the increment is two, two point one billion dollars, so. And so, they know that the, the, the hundred million dollars in that, that where the urban renewal is. they multiply that times seventeen dollars, basically, so the urban renewal gets one point seven million dollars. So then the, the assessor has also computed what each of the municipalities is going to get on everything except that piece up there. But for mechanics, the assessor, and they do hundreds of thousands or millions of calculations. So to make it simple, they sort of release that bar. They know what everybody's going to receive. And so then they, they base the tax rate based upon the whole city. So then when they do that, they release the urban renewal, and it slows, slows down. So everybody gets charged eighty-two cents or something. But, so we, we submit, said we wanted four dollars and fifteen cents for the city, but since we get an extra hundred million, we're cutting it off. We actually, or a raise, three dollars, maybe nine cents or something like that. And so, and that, the additional goes to, to work for me, I don't know what you.
We only have ten minutes to go, and it really has been really valuable for us. So we'd like to, um.
Are you happy to take questions, or you can take a break before your, before your?
You give a bunch of success stories, or any?
Oh, well, I didn't know whether you wanted to talk about the sad people.
I was so ready, I haven't been bad, you know, if you had the information, how you categorize, categorize the hillside renewal district over the years. I didn't think so.
I didn't. There's a characteristic, and actually, Mr. Tashman points it out in his history. He kind of tries to analyze, so what went wrong, the some of them that went wrong? And so there's a characteristic that, you know, that goes across all of these not so good problems. And it's the economy, and the rises and falls of the economy over all of the years. And so one of the problematic districts that I didn't have on this list, but I was reminded of when I was reviewing these materials, is downtown Eugene, which was an early user of urban renewal. They used it to create a downtown mall, a pedestrian mall. They acquired multiple private properties to redevelop the area and to bring in different kinds of retail. Their focus was really retail. They torched the street, built a pedestrian mall. And a number of things came together badly. Completely focusing on retail turned out to be a really bad idea when the retail market collapsed in the late eighties, mid to late eighties. A couple of their anchor department stores moved to Valley River, Valley River Mall? No, I haven't spent seven years of my life there. You know, they, they had this, you know, major suburban center locate two miles from downtown Portland, or downtown Eugene. They had underestimated the attraction of the automobile to the particularly suburban residents of Eugene. And over the years, they have continued to struggle to find what's the right mix in that area. And they have converted of, not they, the, the community with, with, again, with urban renewal help, has converted some of those buildings to office and, you know, office and commercial. They've built parking structures. They've now torn out the mall, you know, reestablishing the grid. But in, and it still exists, the downtown urban renewal area in Eugene still exists. And now the, the big controversy is they're putting a bunch of money into a library in that area. Again, trying to figure out how to get the right mix that attracts private development that stays, and that actually enhances their downtown. And so, you know, the economy was bad, the focus on one industry wasn't a good idea. While malls might have, you know, those kinds of malls might have worked great where you had a large, close in population in a city, a place like Eugene was not a good idea. And so that's an example of, I'll just call it a struggling district that has not yet, you know, it's not finished its potential. There's a couple of suburban ones on this list, Troutdale and Gresham Rockwood. And they are, as you know, existing urban renewal areas. They are focused on particular pieces of property that are significantly blighted. The Troutdale area is their downtown, which is not, a lot of it isn't very blighted. But there's a very large former sewage pond area that's owned by the city. And there's an aging outlet mall. And there is a former industrial site that's owned by the Yoshida family. And these areas have significant environmental contamination, the, the areas that are not the outlet mall. Significant environmental contamination. The Sandy River runs along the edge. It's a beautiful opportunity for something good to happen on the riverfront. You all are familiar with that. But it's got this outlet mall that, while, you know, it certainly serves a purpose, it brings in business, it pays its taxes. It is not the vision that Troutdale has for its downtown. But Troutdale can't do anything about that outlet mall unless they decided they wanted to sell it, or they wanted to voluntarily fix it up, or whatever. So in order to access the most valuable parts of their urban renewal redevelopment site, they have to deal with this outlet mall. So they're stuck right now. And you know, they're working really hard, they've done a lot of progress with the railroads. They've got, you know, the divided town by the railroad and all that. But I won't say it's, I won't say any of these are failures, I'm going to say it's a struggle. It's a struggle. I don't know, I'm looking over here. But, but it's been, you know, it's, it's a tough road, and, and their progress has been very slow. The Gresham Rockwood Urban Renewal Area has an interesting history because as you probably know, Gresham requires a vote on an urban renewal plan. And they had, they had twice tried to establish urban renewal plans and were rejected by the voters. And in the early two thousands, I'm sorry, I don't have the number in my head, they were successful in presenting an urban renewal plan and an urban renewal area for the, for the Rockwood area, which is, you know, basically the entrance to their city that I think by pretty much anybody's definition has indices of blight. And so the city currently controls the former Fred Meyer site. Very large piece of property would be an ideal redevelopment site. But y'all know what happened two years ago, you know, two and a half years ago. They had a redevelopment team who had no way to get any financing. They had a concept, but no way to get financing. So they're struggling with their redevelopment site. They've done some small steps, they've certainly been doing infrastructure in the area. But the potential has not, certainly not been, been realized. And how, you know, the politics will play out on that piece of property is still, still left to be seen. I also have on this list Albany Oak Creek, which isn't quite fair. Because Albany Oak Creek Urban Renewal Area was a one man band. And that's kind of one of the characteristics that sometimes can lead to problems. They adopted an urban renewal plan to do infrastructure for a Pepsi bottling plant. It was a very huge potential industrial investment in their area. And it, the urban renewal plan was derailed by lawsuits of a disgruntled property owner in the urban renewal area. The plan was challenged. I didn't mention that urban renewal plans are actually, when you adopt them, or if you adopt a substantial amendment, they are a land use decision. So they can be challenged at the Land Use Board of Appeals, just like your planning decisions or anything like that. They were taken to Luba, everything was delayed for about a year while it worked through that process. And again, we all know what happened a couple of years ago. And Pepsi pulled their, pulled their plans. And Albany decided that the wise thing to do was likewise terminate the urban renewal area. And if they had a different plan at some point in the future to enhance that industrial area, then they'd come back with, you know, higher, higher frozen base and, and work on it. And work, actually, the other issue they had there was a, was a citizen involvement issue. And they learned, you know, they would, they would do it differently. And then the final one I would mention is, actually in Portland, there's, there's an urban renewal area nobody knows about, it's called Willamette Industrial Area. And it was adopted not very long ago as a, again, as kind of a focus on the industrial areas around the harbor in Portland, out towards the Swan Island kind of area. But it was particularly adopted very quickly. It's like, it's like the fastest urban renewal plan I've ever seen adopted. Because there was a potential for an expansion of the Vacher Sultronic Factory, which is out in that area, they produce chips, chips, they produce something. They produce brown wafers, they produce brown things. And, and it didn't come through. The emphasis for the plan, it's still an active plan, it's still out there, it's still flowing through increment, but it's kind of lost its way at this point. So again, you know, there are urban renewal projects, and that's why I said not so good yet. I mean, we don't know what's going to happen to these in the future. I will make the comment, like, because I asked others who have been around this business as long as I have, did I know, did anybody know of an urban renewal plan that ever couldn't pay its debt? And the answer was no, that nobody had ever gone bust. So that was good news. So I couldn't, I couldn't use the measure of, you know, not enough TIF as a lack of success. So, thank you very much for inviting me. Enjoy being here.
We're going to journey into executive session, uh, executive thesis.
We will, please, thank you.